Wow.
I have a best one. The curve going into Magnus. If you take it too soon, it impacts two of your tires. Well, that's happened to me.
Hey.
We are. Everything.
To the.
Okay, so these are. We are gonna call the order. This is city council regular business meeting for Thursday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-three. It is six oh one P M. Kalen, would you call the roll?
Council member Lester.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Smeesaw.
She will be here when she can.
Uh, cool.
There.
Livingston.
Yeah.
And Mayor Phillips.
I am here as well. So we do have quorum, so we will move on. As I said, Councilmember Riva will be here in a little while. You know, if you'll note the time when she gets here, that would be great. So item number two on the agenda is pledge of allegiance. Please. Item number three is approval of the agenda. We are gonna remove item six A from the agenda tonight. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda?
Motion?
Motion by Livingston, second by Cool to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion carries. Item number four is a dedicated work session. So this work session is for mayor, council, and staff. Regular city council meeting will begin immediately following the work session. However, we may have to take breaks since public notices. And well, no, that never mind. That was for a different meeting. Cut and paste. All right. Item A, safest city in Iowa. So there are several things besides public safety that makes Norwalk a safe city. And Luke Nelson is gonna lead this discussion with input from the department director. So turn it over to Luke.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just getting my notes set up here. Rushing in from one meeting to a next. Challenging. Okay, so over the next several months, I plan to take a little bit of a deeper dive into our vision twenty twenty-eight. Also talking about some of our goals that council has adopted. The purpose of this exercise of going through these different components of our strategic vision is to help myself, staff, citizens, even council themselves understand better some of the details of our vision that has been adopted. And specifically for this meeting tonight, it's to talk about strengthening our vision for what it's safest city means. So what are we looking for from mayor and council? As we go through the following slides, there'll be one essentially for each department. And we, when we go through these slides, what we are looking for is just general feedback from council. Your thoughts? Are you in agreement with these items that are showing up on the screen? We're gonna be talking about how each department adds to the safest city. There's a good chance that we have missed something. This is where we need your help. There's also a good chance that we've added something that may not necessarily align with how you define Norwalk as a safe city. So please interrupt at any time and provide us with your thoughts. This is intended to be an open dialogue. So the first one is administration, and I let the department heads know that I'm happy to leave this. I'm gonna go through and essentially I'm gonna read a lot of what we see on the screen along with you so that you have a chance to see what each department says. All the department heads, council, same thing. It's an open dialogue. If I say something incorrectly or if we're missing something on the screen, department heads, please jump in.
Luke.
Yes?
I just wanna say that when I went through these things at first, I thought, oh, this makes no sense. But then I had to remember that judging safety is in the, in, is in the eye of the beholder. So if the resident feels safe, the city is safe. If the resident doesn't feel safe, the city might not be safe. So when you read these things from all the non-public safety departments, it's things that a resident would consider that makes them feel like they live in a safe community. Not so much that there's low crime or that the fire department responds quickly, that sort of thing. So safety is a term that can be defined in a number of ways. But a lot of these things are from a resident's perspective, if they had to mark down on a, on a survey, do they feel safe? It's all the things that the city government can provide to make somebody feel like they live in a safe community. Not so much the street, like that works or doesn't work, or that the cops solve the way they spend.
Well said. Thank you. So administration is the first one we'll talk about. So this would be office that I'm in. We pull in H R, legal, and finance under administration. We focus on transparency and citizen education, which is critical in achieving trust by local citizens and businesses. May not be a safe feeling as you're walking down the street, but overall, it's a sense you're feeling in the community. We strive for efficiency and budgeting and overall city operations. We have developed methods to review spending so as to prevent improper use of public funds. If any of you have noticed in my city manager project management sheet, there is one tab in there. I know it scared some people when they've seen that they've contacted me. It says employee theft with a bunch of exclamation points and question marks. And the reason that I have that one is periodically between Gene, the clerk, and I, we sit down and we talk about, okay, let's imagine for a moment that this employee is stealing from the city. How do we prevent those things from happening? We try to think of different sample scenarios to make sure that we're getting ahead or preventing any temptation of any issues like that. We make ourselves available to the public through various means of communication. We record and post all council meetings to YouTube for easy review and access. I myself use that quite a bit to go back and research things. And finally, commitment to employee training of physical, mental, and emotional, as well as safety practices. Additional comments or questions on those? The next one is community development. Our community development department will be department that Luke Paris runs. They handle nuisance abatement, issuing permits for new construction, handle all of our subdivision reviews, zoning review, and a host rental code inspections and a host of others. Of course, the first one on the list is rental inspections to ensure safe rental properties, building inspections to ensure safe structures, nuisance inspections to ensure safe sidewalks and property, street designs promote safe speeds and pedestrian and vehicle interactions, zoning standards to ensure limits of noxious hazardous land uses, stormwater design standards to improve water quality, and subdivision and zoning standards promote orderly growth that improves preserves emergency response times. Last night, my, my wife and I went for a walk and we were talking about this presentation I was gonna do. We were walking along Beardsley in that section of sidewalk where there's a huge ditch on one side and an empty field on the other. And she commented that when she walks by herself, she doesn't like to come out to this location. She likes to stay internal to the city streets. But homes around just the overall built environment gives her a safer feeling. It doesn't have anything to do with how often she might see a police officer drive down the road. Even though they do good, we see them often in the neighborhood. But it was interesting that the things that have to do with our subdivision standards had an impact on somebody feeling safe. Any other questions on these? Luke, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, just quick, you know, everything we do in community development creates back at some point a question about safety. Right? The first zoning laws in the country were put in place because of safety concerns and overcrowding of buildings and these things all the way up to our building inspections and all that stuff. So the question of, you know, creating a safe city from community development is inherent in what we do. And then just to play on the building standards thing, our built environment drastically impacts how safe we feel and how safe we are across the board, whether that be roads, houses, orientations of buildings, and stormwater design for flooding. All of these things are, come back to some kind of base level of safety. So.
Other comments, questions? Next one is economic development. Here, this is researching and working with reputable developers and businesses in order to ensure that the customers being attracted are coming to Norwalk for the best purpose possible. Seek products and services that reflect Norwalk's values and don't create environments for negative activity. When recruiting businesses to Norwalk, being able to showcase our safety records is critical, especially to larger companies of high value and employee base. Holly, anything you would like to add to that?
Um, the only thing I would say is that when Michael Foods decided to locate here, they did mention that as being one of the reasons they chose Norwalk is that it was a very safe city, and they knew that we had that record. So it doesn't matter.
I know that we have one on fire department here, but oftentimes it's one of the first questions we get from those entities is what kind of response times your fire department have access to adequate water pressure?
And adequate equipment. They look at to see that we have a tower truck and things like that. That plays into a larger industrial areas. If they're coming here, if we have the appropriate apparatus.
Next one is the fire department. Fire prevention and public outreach events such as CPR training, fire extinguisher training, and smoke detector checks. Annual life and safety inspections of local businesses to ensure compliance with the International Fire Code. Plan review and fire code enforcement of site plans, and new commercial development to promote safety and vitality of the community. Of course, there's all the obvious stuff of actually responding to the nine-one call. These are seeing all those things outside of those, those normal activities where as we typically define the fire department.
Yes, I have a question. On the public safety side, normally safety is a part of all the operations. And this is normally what it's fire chief and police chief. If they find an operation or do something, there's a, usually a section in the plan to mitigate against risk perhaps. And I wondered, do, do all the city departments address that that way in their operations when they conduct operations, or is it an even application for that, or? Because they have a safe community. It's really important that our staff are safe as well. And I wondered just, oh, that was your minister, but. Why did my? Am I running ahead of your slideshow?
No, no, this is good. So a couple of things. One, you talked about the hazard mitigations, and that's something that Chief Porter, we've had some discussions, some of the updates that we're doing to those plans. Each department is involved in that process.
Good.
As far as each, you're asking more of a question. Does each department have their own?
Yeah, operationally, out here, day-to-day operations, things.
You know, police and fire, I would say, are probably the most detailed in terms of SOP and standard operating procedures.
Sure.
The rest of us operate under the city policy manual. But I would say that I think in our department, for example, like finance and utilities, we do have some operating procedures. To the extent that that involves a lot of safety discussions, that's more so interactions with the public, some people that maybe come in to city hall and are irate.
Sure.
We've adopted some things such as we advise that little green button on all of our computers where if there's, somebody feels unsafe, they can activate that, and it can be for other departments, including fire and police.
Very good. I guess that was just in my mind as I was wondering about that as you're going through this, that, you know, the staff generally, right? Are we, are we doing things, you know, to keep them safe?
We do also assign, we do trainings as well. We have some online trainings that we assign on a monthly basis, and sometimes they're safety oriented. I know recently, over the winter, we had one about snow plowing. There's some about, you know, how to properly lift things that you don't hurt your back, slips, trip, falls, like that. So yes, we also utilize the fire department and usually once a year, once every two years, offer CPR training for free for our employees. The fire department will come over and show the different departments how to use the A E D and things like that. So. I, I think also like, if I could, an overall manual, I think we had had discussions of the tornado last year about the emergency response plan. So we have been doing a revamp of that. The plan that we had got a little confusing, if you will, between, are we talking about a base level plan? Are we talking about operations? Because really, they're two separate things. So I've been working on a basic plan and a comprehensive plan, but it comes down to, as FEMA recognizes those to be. So who's in charge of what? Where do we congregate? That sort of thing. And so then, once we're through both the basic and comprehensive plan, like I said, that is headed by FEMA. It's a FEMA standardized plans that all of our neighboring communities use as well in the metro. And then we'll look at it more from an operational plan. So we're kind of building it in, in sequential order instead of jumping around. We talk about operations now, and we talked about the basis of it. We kind of need, we needed to get our foundation right first, and we identified that after the tornado last year. So those are in progress. Basic, the basic plan is finalized. I just have to do a few more things on it. And the comprehensive plan just has some formatting issues. So that'll be coming forward soon.
Good, thank you.
I'm sure we'll likely have to put some things together for the new field house once we start, start operating that facility. But just like the library and other places where we have a lot of the public that come in, where we get some large crowds. That's kind of a key reason of making that a little bit more robust. Chief, did you have anything else to add?
No, I have nothing further.
Next one is the library. Here, they provide a broad range of cultural, educational, and recreational materials in a collection that provides representation for community members in many formats. Offer programs, gathering spaces, internet, and other services to all partners with community organizations to support marginalized and vulnerable groups, including youth, LGBTQ plus, elderly, special needs, and those experiencing food or housing issues. Also maintain an accessible and welcoming facility. Anything else you'd like to add?
Um, I would just like to apologize for being a little late. I was actually addressing one of the safety issues before I came over. We had a little incident with some of the youth after school, and it was racially charged and unpleasant, and it's something that we will not have in our library because we do try to be a safe and welcoming building for everyone. So my apologies for being late.
For taking care of that.
Absolutely.
Pretty timely, too.
Yes, the irony is not lost.
Any other questions on library? Next one is parks and recreation. There's time spent in nature immediately adjacent to home helps people to relieve mental fatigue, reducing aggression. Green spaces are gathering places where neighbors from social ties that produce stronger safer neighborhoods. Barren spaces are more frightening to people and are more crime prone compared to landscape parks with greenery and open vistas. And we think about the regional park discussion that we were having in an area of the town. And you recall that Chief Staples brought up on several occasions the concern of isolated areas within that regional park and some of the difficulties that a police department can have with that. So even thinking about how we design our parks is an impact on how somebody feels.
Yeah, I would think park design would be a real key component.
Robin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, just on to what Ed was asking about earlier, as far as additional training with the product center. We do all of our training for lifeguards. And in addition to their annual lifeguard training, we do monthly in services to just refresh them on their skills. Dakota does chainsaw safety every year, and both him and Adam do the U T V safe driving training. So that's it.
Thanks, Robin. Next one is the police department. So some of their say, non-traditional type of policing items. Juvenile outreach, including the life program, dare program, and junior police academy. Community outreach, including Front Fortune Norwalk, various community partnerships, and citizen training classes. Commitment to traffic safety and occupant protection, child safety seats as an example. Low reported crime rate per capita in our citywide preventative patrols. This is the one that was really neat that a key priority for the police officers is to be seen. I think that's something you've talked about, making sure that you have a consistent travel around the community so people can see the officers. Plus, that just helps observe everything happening across the town. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
That's probably the big key one, I would think, from the P D side, visibility. You know, it, it does deserve, right? It does.
It's fortunately for me, my wife spends a lot of time picking up and dropping off Nick to school. But on the times that I take them, it's interesting how often I see the officers making a purposeful trip around the school. It seems like that's when I often see them is when I'm doing pick up and drop off. Public works. In maintaining streets that are free of potholes, the snow and ice ensures safer travel for our residents and visitors. Utility repair and maintenance, properly functioning sanitary sewer systems are one of the most critical components of a modern, safe community. Likewise, maintaining quality potable water that is available twenty-four seven at the turn of a lever is an essential component of a safe community.
Yeah, this stuff is really critical. People don't realize it's a critical factor.
It becomes expected, which is good. It's good. We're in a society where that's such a common thing that it's expected. It really is the core.
You bet it is.
Wayne, anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
So our next steps, what we're gonna do is we will include these summary of items in our vision twenty twenty-eight associated with safety. And some of these items may come up as updates if we advance more. The next time we put in a water tower, we were just talking about utilities, things like that, we'll be sure to kind of reference that there is a relationship to safety of Norwalk. There any other questions? Excellent. Well, we'll move forward with some additional items within that vision. We'll probably bring that up. May not be at the next council meeting, but we'll go through and continue to review those in our vision. Thank you.
In the military, we had a phrase called synergism of the force. You know what that means? It's using all your resources to affect a particular thing, right? So everything, you don't leave anything on your finger. Whatever you've got, right? And that appears to be where we're headed, that everybody's involved in some aspect to trying to make stuff better. That's a good thing.
For sure. Anything else? All right, we will move on to item number five. Welcome guests and public comments. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate some participation in our meetings. At this point in time, we'd open up dice to address council for non non-agenda items. We'll give you a three-minute time limit. We can't take action on these items tonight. The, do you want to talk about since they aren't on the agenda? Also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time. So we'll open up. Any tapers? Non-line. Hearing none, we will move on. Item seven, have proclamations tonight. We have National Library Week, which is April twenty-third to twenty-ninth. Municipal Clerks Week is April thirtieth to May the sixth. Building Safety Month is May, is all of May, twenty twenty-three, and Mental Health Month is all of May of twenty twenty-three. Keep an eye out on social media, and those proclamations will be posted probably tomorrow or sometime soon. We also have a couple of other proclamations, and I'm gonna go down there to read those. So. Okay. First proclamation is for Erin Cook. So this is a proclamation of recognition. And it says, whereas Erin Cook has been an inspiration and strong supporter of the city of Iowa, and whereas Erin Cook has been a consistent advocate for Norwalk and someone working on the city's behalf, and whereas Erin Cook was an integral part of bringing the new Moore County Justice Center to fruition, helping Norwalk receive the art grant funds for next Norwalk certified site, and overall improving the culture of Moore County. Now therefore being resolved, the mayor and city council of the city of Norwalk wish to offer their sincere appreciation to Erin Cook for making it a valuable contribution to our community. Whereas, whereof, I have here a two-step and cost ceiling city to be fixed on this twentieth day of April, twenty twenty-three. So thank you for all of that. Uh, next. This is a good one. Judy Corkman? I'll read this one.
You don't want to give me a tone.
Uh, this is another proclamation of recognition. So it says, whereas Judy Corkman has been an inspiration and strong supporter of the city of Iowa, and whereas Judy Parker has been a consistent advocate for Norwalk, someone working on the city's behalf. And whereas Judy Parker has been an ethical part of hometown tribes, the draw up to the public library board of trustees, the North East Republic Library Foundation, the North Community Foundation, and being a part of Front Course Norwalk, now therefore be resolved, mayor and city council of City of Norwalk wish to offer their sincere appreciation to Judy Corkman for making a valuable contribution to the community, and hereby award duties of twenty twenty-three Warrior of the Year.
Okay. Oh. Thank you. I missed here ten years and nine months ago, and I'm so glad I did.
And appreciation for your valuable contribution to everything. And appreciation for your valuable contribution to everything.
Mom.
So, yeah, you are.
The library week presentation was why I was there.
Hey, what a nice surprise.
Uh, I'll tell you what, Judy is in just about every community chat that you have on Saturday and she always second Saturday of the month. She always has a great lineup of questions to ask, so. Yeah. You're not noticing.
Very curious and I am a former newspaper reporter.
Yeah. So. Okay, we will move on. Consent agenda, item number eight. Uh, we have expenditures, tax abatements. At April 3rd, 2023 minutes of the uh regular city council meeting. A special event application for Run Norwalk event on May 13th, 2023. Uh, we have resolution setting May 4th, 2023 for a public hearing regarding a zoning amendment to change 78, 76 acres of land at 250 Beardsley Street from AR Agricultural Reserve to R160 Single Family Residential. We have a resolution to approve pay estimate number one to Van Monan Electric for electrical work completed on the Norwalk Fieldhouse project. We have a resolution to approve pay estimate number two to Van Monan Electric for electrical work completed on the Norwalk Fieldhouse project. A resolution to approve pay estimate number one to land sync construction for work completed on the Norwalk Fieldhouse project. They have resolution to approve pay estimate number 11 to Stern Twist Construction for Sunset Drive, Iowa Highway 28 and North Avenue Intersection Improvements Project. We have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a 28e agreement with the city of Des Moines for Homeland Defense Resources. A resolution approving a grant agreement with the Warren County Philanthropic Partnership. We have a resolution approving pay estimate number one to IAD Concrete for the 2022 PCC Street Rehabilitation Project. Okay, so that's just the first page. We got the next one from uh, we have a resolution appointing Justin Terrence to the Stormwater Advisory Committee. A resolution reappointing Anthony Samson to the Planning and Zoning Commission. A resolution to approve pay estimate number one to Elder Corporation for Sunset Drive, Iowa Highway 28 and Beardsley Street Intersection Improvements Project. We have a resolution reappointing Dave McCloney to the Parks and Rec Commission. A resolution approving Iowa 28 and Beardsley Street Improvements Project Change Order Number One. A resolution sponsoring an economic development assistance contract with Iowa Economic Development Authority, IEDA, and Michael Foods. We have a resolution approving fiscal year 24 non-union employee wages. A resolution to approve the acceptance of an assistance to firefighters grant for the purchase of personal protective equipment for the fire department. A resolution to approve the acceptance of a Warren County Philanthropic Partnership Community Grant for the purchase of low angle rescue equipment for the fire department. We have a resolution approving the promissory note and mortgage and contract for the Norwalk Rehabilitation Assistance Program Project for 712 Lewis Avenue. We have monthly reports and correspondence. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Say. Motion by Livingston, seconded by Reva. Caitlin, would you call roll?
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Reva.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
All right, motion carries. That was a long one. Uh, item nine, hold a new business for consideration, discussion and possible actions. So item A is a public hearing regarding a zoning amendment uh to chapter 175 C dot 04 Airport Hazard Height and Noise Mitigation Overlay Zoning Regulations to Update Requirements for Navigation Easements. Uh, so we'll open up the public hearing at 6:34 PM. The planning and zoning table their discussion of this item. So we really don't have anything to present at this time. Uh, we're going to keep uh the public hearing open and expect to conclude this uh hearing at our next meeting. So moving on to item nine B is a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Holland Point, plat three. Holland Point is the housing development south of Beardsley, east of Highway 28. You'll see the plat three is to the south of where houses have been going up already. So Luke, I'll let you take it from here.
Yep, uh, that's correct. So this plat three uh section of Holland Point um is the first kind of southern section, I guess, of the plat extends all the way down to Colonial Parkway. If you get maps up there showing where it's that set. So um continuation of existing roads down there, continuing continuation of Colonial Parkway through the development. There will be uh new to Norwalk a roundabout at Sayer Drive and Colonial Parkway. Um, the reason for that was kind of twofold. One, um, just general traffic movement around about performed pretty well for that for a uh kind of major intersection and two to um dissuade any industrial traffic that may want to drive east on Colonial Parkway. I sure hope they would not do that, but um, one more barrier. Um, that was a pretty big discussion point uh going long back time uh when uh even back to when Wilfredo was developing and uh what would happen with Colonial Parkway Extension. So that finally seems saves that to fruition through the project. Um, in general, though, uh, single family homes, um, a few townhome lots along uh Sayer Drive. Um, there is a parkland identified. Well, there's a couple of parkland things identified in here. Um, this plat specifically has Outlot Y as parkland. Um, there is a bigger chunk of parkland that will be dedicated. Um, that's kind of shown in that parkland exhibit on the final piece. Um, two acres of greenway parkland along the creek, then another five acres of parkland uh south of that uh would come, I would imagine, as part of uh plat four. Um, the parkland did go to the Parks Commission um earlier uh in the process and they discussed the kind of layout of things mainly because that greenway area is kind of hilly and obviously not meeting a lot of our flat uh terrain requirements. Um, but ultimately they recommended proceeding with that, uh, given some of the amenities and unique park features that would give to the city. Um. Other than that, uh, again, 122 units, a density of three and a quarter per acre essentially. So happy to take any questions. Uh, I believe our uh developers here as well can answer questions if you have them.
Well, this kick in uh great in the the station as a part of this.
Yes. And we're in plans finalizing the easement purchase. The engineer has told us that they have the design significantly done. They'll be ready to go out for bid as soon as we conclude the easement acquisition.
Good.
And this process will approve a preliminary plat. We're already reviewing construction documents and all that. And so constructional things can line up as as that happens.
Question or concept?
Mm-hmm.
For the roundabout, I'm sure the fire chief will ensure that, you know, it's adequate to the largest truck we have to be able to do that, okay?
We reviewed that with engineering and um they did the diagrams. We gave them the 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 dimensions of our fire truck to make sure that it could maneuver that as well as we ensured that the curves would be built to the manner that it could withstand um use of our apparatus.
Good.
So.
When I was out in Loveland, Colorado visiting my brother-in-law, they put in some new roundabouts. And I don't know how it happened, but uh, they didn't do a real thorough discussion of the roundabouts with school for buses. And uh, with the party department, presumably the fire unit. So it was very painful for them to make the corrections, but eventually they had to make it. And so just checking, I'm sure our staff is very thorough. I'm sure that it won't be missed, so thank you.
Other questions, comments from council? Any public comment? Hearing none, can I get a motion for these resolutions presented?
Motion second.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Reva. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Caitlin, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Reva.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item nine C is resolution setting May 4th, 2023. We're public hearing regarding a zoning amendment to chapter 176 G zoning ordinance architectural standards. So we've been having some discussions on architecture standards as it relates to hotels. We wanted to bring this uh discussion to council. Uh, Luke and Holly, I'll let you take it.
Sure.
Whichever. That move over there.
That's what I prepared for. So somebody, somebody else wants to jump in, by all means, you know, you can uh go right ahead. So um, as the mayor mentioned, uh, I guess just to back up real quick. Um, usually we would bring a zoning amendment as a public hearing. This type of thing is consent item. Um, but because this is not a change to property, a property owner requesting their change to property. Um, we've thought it important for you all to have a discussion about it before we just went forward with public hearings and then brought a change to you to consider. So um, as Mayor mentioned, we've had a lot of interest in hotel development um really for the past decade, um, looking at various parcels throughout town. Um, we're getting two projects that are getting closer to uh fruition. Um, we did receive a state uh site plan at the staff level for a Fairfield Inn um located in Norwalk Central. Uh, we reviewed that and as part of that review, we determined that it does not meet our architectural standards um via the elevations they submitted. Um, their current plan has the exterior as 88% exterior insulated finish systems, which we'll call EFS going forward. So I don't have to say that a bunch of times.
That's pretty.
So EFS. Um, so essentially, uh, you can see on the screen there, that's kind of what EFS is. Um, it's a panel that has kind of a uh insulated styrofoam, um, has a backing that goes against the the wall and then has um some substrate that gives it some uh uh durability and then an exterior coating. So our current standards um require uh various levels of class one and two materials. Um, depending on what district you're in. So anywhere from 85% class one and two um, down to 50% class one and two, um, depending on if you're in the TC, the C2 or the uh C3 district. Uh, the proposed Fairfield Inn happens to be in town center district zone within the um, huge century crossing PUD for Norwalk Central. So our typical class one and two materials would be brick, stone, glass, metal panels. Um, you may recall during our uh Norwalk uh field house discussions, we changed our own materials to a higher quality material that was a concealed fastener metal panel. Um, that's not uh material that's enumerated in our codes. We had to have a discussion and determine what we wanted to do with that. Um, so now we consider that to be class one and two. Uh, your class three and four materials are things that are typically considered less durable, such as these EFS panels. Fibers mat panels, wood and those types of things. Um, the Fairfield Inn developer has requested that the city consider to um changing that EFS from a class three material up to a class two material, and that would allow them to continue their project as submitted with the 88% exterior um facade space. Um, should be noted that uh that's not just a hotel thing. If we were to do that, that would be for every commercial building in Norwalk could uh meet that EFS requirement. Um, so that'd be a pretty substantial change to um what our code currently is. Um. We did go through and uh I'll be honest, architectural standards before this work, my uh expertise, I feel like I'm a lot better with them now, having spent time reading uh every metro codes, um, architectural standards uh the last couple of weeks. Um, so we we did some research on that. We did some street view review of just uh Iowa Fairfield sites um that I included in the packet. Um, I also did just some some back of the map, didn't look at other um hotel uh developments around the metro, again, um, Google Street View stuff. Um, which can be difficult sometimes to determine here. So some of those are kind of guesses. If you see some question marks there. Um, what I found from that research is in reviewing codes, no metro community considers EFS to be either a primary or a high quality material. So everybody either has a class one, two, three system like we do, and they keep it a lower class or they'll have primary and secondary materials and they'll call it a secondary uh material. There are a couple of exceptions to that with uh potentially PUDs, um, the big one being uh Jordan Creek Town Center. Um, they have this whole Mediterranean theme they want to do, which allows for a high quality or a high level EFS on their buildings. So that's why you might see that out there. Um, so our requirements are roughly in line with other metro communities. Um, I'd actually say I think we're on the stricter side, though. Um, but within within reason, we're uh there uh with everybody else. Um, metro Fairfield Inn locations, um, they do all appear to at least have a base of brick. Um, Urbandale and Tuna Projects uh seem to have a little more EFS than what my code research said that they shouldn't allow. So that maybe is an indication that they have a PUD or some special uh requirements for those sites. I wasn't able to make connections with their staff to get into the details on specific sites. Um, did find that other sites within the metro area often have a higher percentage of EFS or other panels on the upper stories of their buildings. Um, though they almost all seem to have uh lots of brick base first level stories. Um, proposed Norwalk Hotel would appear to be more similar from my Google review of uh Oskaloosa, Cedar Rapids, Waterloo, Clear Lake Decor and Burlington Hotels. Um, I did also talk with uh Studio Melee, who is our architect that was working on the Norwalk Fieldhouse to try to get independent architects' opinion of it. Um, his uh opinion was that he felt our classification was accurate um and referenced that a lot of the concerns with it would be um the varying degrees that of quality that you might see from manufacturers. So one brand might be better than another brand, but as a city, we regulate the material, not the brand, and then also the quality of installation. So um, on one end, you could have a high quality material installed by a very qualified installer that would perform a lot better than on the other end of a low quality material with a low quality installer, which you can have that across all material types, I would add. So, um, with that, uh, our kind of staff analysis of it is that um, we do feel like we're in line with other cities. However, we think we may be on a little bit on the restrictive side. And there's may might be some wiggle room um to look at some kind of ordinance amendment that would be a compromise that would um preserve some of our current intent for most commercial buildings while allowing um upper story uh three, four, five-story buildings to be a little bit less uh stringent with those uh class one and two materials. So what we're looking for is some direction on if we should proceed with the change, um, some ideas on what that change might look like. Um, I certainly have some ideas in my head that I could certainly uh be willing to pass on to you. Um, we're currently we've already scheduled for a public hearing for uh the next P and Z meeting, just trying to keep things on schedule. Um, certainly if you all decided to tell us not to do that, we would cancel that public hearing at planning commission, but um, we did want to just make a few assumptions so that we didn't get bogged down with the meeting schedule of things. So happy to answer any questions. I believe we do have uh Mitch with uh the architect on the Fairfield project and Brian, the developer, I believe, both on Zoom. They were going to join via Zoom anyway. So they will be here for their uh input as well. Thoughts?
Yes, so comments? Questions?
I guess my my question would be, you know, uh, we're kind of discussing a couple of different things, right? One, one we're discussing change in the standards, citywide. And it's my possibility to do it. And the other thing is we're discussing construction within PUD.
Correct.
Is it possible for us to try to find uh resolution within the context P and D? Leave alone our building code standards, citywide. New one and and not the other.
The PUD process does give us the ability to vary architectural standards. As you recall, when we were talking about the HH Norwalk PD, actually, we talked about requiring extra architectural standards if we were going to allow a higher density for a uh multifamily product, right? Um, so the PUD process has the ability to do that. Um, this isn't, this is the hotel that's asking for this. We do have other hotel projects that have expressed similar concerns with our architectural standards that would not be in this PUD area. Um, so we may be back discussing that again for another future hotel project. And then any other ones in town, um. And then any other ones in town, um, again, I would anticipate would have similar statements to us.
So more, more efficient of our time to do it. More expansive than just PUD by PUD?
Probably, yes. And it, it also puts us in an odd situation if we say we're going to lessen the standard. Particularly if it's in the Norwalk Century area, that's supposed to be our kind of premier area, we're going to lessen the standard, but then a guy builds one. Uh, out on fiftieth at the S curves in ten years and we say, well, you can't do what they did over in our nice area.
Maybe we learn a thing or two.
Yeah, it could be too, but yeah, yep. So, but we still have the ability to do that. I mean, because it's a PUD, we don't have to be consistent with that. Um, but it. Not fun to conversations when you gotta say, well, because we wanted to and now we don't, so.
And if I recall, at last several meetings, there has been a big push by council to be consistent.
We tried.
Having a lot of experience with this product in my past career, um, I really detest. Um, if, if it's on the. Upper levels, it might be okay. Um, I don't know if we get down to the details, like somebody, it's like you can't use it as a themselves. I mean, so what percentage of your. Exterior, are you including when you're figuring that out? But also on, on the first floor, especially if it's going to apply to any. Commercial building, I really want to see concrete with something. Because you might be okay with the hotel, but I can tell you, we need to see a grocery cart that can damage. You know, the side of the building really fast, or you have loading docks and trucks back up and they miss it and it's damaged. And it's hard to replace and it's. You got water issues and I know that they have a new water system. Um, I'm kind of surprised to see that we still allow the standard. Because without that water.
As a class four material, so, yeah.
We like it at all.
Yeah.
Um, I lived in a place that had that and we spent thousands of dollars replacing our entire exterior. So I just, I haven't had a good experience with the product. I don't think it looks good long term. Um, I know there's been many advances in the product over the years, um, but you say like write it to me, it just doesn't show.
Is there a distinction between the older and newer generations of what you're starting?
It's primarily the whether it's more water managed or not. And from our research, I don't. I don't think there's really a product out there anymore that would meet the old standard, um. It seems like most products now are, would be considered the water managed uh system.
What? And uh you analyzed it and it didn't meet the criteria and I don't, trying to read through this was very similar to the federal tax form.
I don't know if I should be.
What was the percentage? What was, what was the uh percentage of, of how much they missed? Were they very close? Was it dramatically off?
They were eighty-eight percent um EFS and in the TC district, they'd only be allowed to be fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent when they were at eighty-eight, so, okay, that is dramatically.
And just a, as I mentioned, in some aspects were, were in line with other, with other communities and in other aspects were more restrictive. Our TC district is the most restrictive architectural requirement in the metro. So from that regard, we're kind of out of the norm, um, our C two and our C three districts are much more. Common um percentages uh metro wide.
And could we? Is there a significant difference? And maybe I'm not understanding this right, but. Could um EFS be? That a certain quality of EFS be um class three and a certain quality of EFS be class four? Or am I not?
So the, the way when we created our architectural standards, there's like a high quality EFS, which was the water managed system. That was our class three and then there was the kind of older system that Stephanie was talking about, which we called class four.
Okay, so could we, for instance, limit it to the class three level?
Yeah, so, yeah, yep, you, you certainly could. So we can write those percentages either any way we would want, um. For instance, if we were in a C three district, we would be saying half of their building could be EFS. So then they wouldn't be nearly as drastically off. As they are in the TC district, so, um, and then I guess another, and I, I believe it's in my staff report. But we do also have a requirement that you can't have EFS um on the lower area of the building. So I know when we were doing our, because Stephanie was on planning commission at that time, I believe that was a, a, a point that you made clear throughout it. Um, was that uh concerns about damage on that lower level. So we already do not require them um on that lower uh portion of the facade.
So specifically, what are you suggesting for uh some of the compromises?
Well, and you know, I, I think at some point we need a little bit of feedback from the, the project applicants as well. Um, where my kind of head went with it was most of our commercial buildings are going to be one story. And I feel like most of council is pretty okay with architectural standards for the one-story buildings, um. So my thought was, what if the upper stories has a different requirement in the commercial district? Um, and then if we want to try and be consistent with things, we could then look to our apartment building requirements and see what that was. So um our apartment requirements would allow, I think seventy-five percent of the building to be class three materials. So again, that's pretty, the, the only structures that we're gonna, I really think see in town that are legitimately over one story. Are hotels and apartments most likely, right? And so. Uh, to me, at least in my head, like, well, there's a little bit of a nexus there between the two. So if we kept a standard that kept a higher quality on the first floor, that keeps all of our standards in place for most commercial buildings. And then we ease up a little bit on upper stories, um. That made sense to me, um, I did kind of float that out there as a thought to our applicants and, you know, so certainly I'm sure they have. A lot of opinions on all these discussions as they are the folks building it and they have a better idea on costs and. And swing out their project and all that.
Makes, that makes sense to me and here's part of the reason why, because a hotel has an interest. In maintaining the integrity of their property. They don't sign a six-month, one-year lease that somebody is stuck with when things fall in disrepair. That they don't necessarily have to fix. A hotel needs to maintain the appearance and integrity of the property to. In order to continue to fill it, to continue for them to make money. So that makes, it makes sense to me. That we would. Allow it like we allow it for apartments.
Yeah, that would seem to uh make sense to me too.
Or maybe the fifty percent I was talking about seems to make sense. Maybe not go quite as far as the uh the apartment.
But so, I'm not, I'm not, I don't understand why, why do we have? Less, why do we require more? Appearance integrity in our hotel than in an apartment?
I think commercial uh lends an image a little bit more than apartments.
Right.
Um, and when I think fifty percent versus seventy-five percent, if it is a degraded product. Uh, I think seventy-five percent is probably too much.
But don't you think they're more likely to restore and improve than?
Sometimes they don't have the money to after uh, after it's open.
I don't disagree, but certainly apartments don't. I mean, that's what I'm struggling with this. I'm struggling with the, the.
Maybe we shouldn't apply, let apartments do so much of it.
Well, that's a different special.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, but I just.
And I'll clarify, I did pull up uh the actual things. Apartments currently would be sixty percent class three. So an idea would be to go to sixty percent. Um, one of the thoughts I floated around was if you were requiring more than what apartments have on the first floor. Maybe you're willing to have less or have the, the class three be more than apartments on the top three stories, right? Like so, and you may go up to seventy-five percent there, um, because you're requiring more on that first level, so.
Yeah, I, I would like to hear what Jared took to say.
Yeah, anybody that's on the Zoom meeting, wanna, wanna weigh in?
Yeah.
Please uh, please go ahead and state your name and then your address and.
Yeah, sure. Hi, uh, good evening. My name is Mitch Bushkoff. Um, I'm the architect in charge for the design of this Fairfield Inn and Suites. Being proposed at the Hughes Century Crossing plant, um, address is W five two zero one Prospect Road in Horicon, Wisconsin. Um, just want to start off by thanking the council for considering an amendment to the architectural standards. Uh, I know that these standards are set in place to achieve the unified aesthetic throughout the city. Um, and that's not lost on us and we appreciate the opportunity to present information supporting this petition to these standards. Uh, and, and with that said, I, I think uh Luke has done a fantastic job of, of going through. Um, where EFS has, has been in the past and where it is now. I know somebody had mentioned that um they had a poor experience with EFS. My guess is that is EFS of the past that does not have drainage abilities that, that EFS does um in today's day and age. Uh, I think EFS has, has jumped a tremendous amount uh since the eighties and nineties. When there was no drainage capabilities, um, it's also a much more green product. That's something that, that wasn't quite mentioned. But there's an implementation of a, of rigid insulation board that is put behind the EFS that uh, that allows for a lot more energy efficiency. Um, that is definitely something to consider with this product. Uh, another thing I think that, that. I'd like to address is that we had mentioned that there was a difference in, in qualities of EFS. Depending on the contractor, the installation process, uh, realistically, there is a class two material in. That, that is in the architectural standards that is masonry stucco and that product is uh infamous. For having uh a different quality of construction and installation and a wide variety of different surfaces that can come, that can come along with that product. Um, and EFS is really made to mimic stucco and actually be more breathable and actually be more. Uh, better performing moisture and thermal wise uh for, for a building. And, and I think Luke has uh really made a great point when he said that there's probably a compromise in there. Where we're not, we're not looking necessarily to absolutely, you know, blanket change the entire standard. But, but there is a compromise in there where maybe we. You know, we, we adhere to, we adhere to the standards, you know, maybe on the first floor only where we, where we provide a. Um, a really nice adhered stone, which would be a class two material, um. And, and maybe on the upper floors, we, we more adhere to a more loose, loose standard. Um, I, I definitely think that there is a, a compromise in here.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? Wanna weigh in?
Yeah, hi, this is uh Ryan Jensen, the developer, and I, I apologize. I've been, I'm parked in the middle of nowhere, Iowa here. Uh, trying to listen to this call and I think I've, Luke's let me into this meeting about thirty times already, so uh there's a chance I drop off. So, um, I, I'll just say that a couple of things, so we, we have to um carefully. Uh, be careful about the product we're developing in the market and, you know, w- we're developing a, a mid-grade hotel. Not uh the Taj Mahal of, of hotels, not a full-service Marriott, because that's not what the market demands. And so we have to be conscious as developers on our overall cost, because unlike a luxury apartment complex, it's maybe full stone. With, with a, a bunch of amenities, you know, we're limited to what we can do with.
You're on.
All right, all right, thank you. Um, so we, we're trying to be mindful of the product class that we're building that we, that, that meets the need of what the market. Demand is, um, you know, unlike luxury apartments where you have full stone, whatever, and you can, you can charge extra rent for those luxury apartments. You know, we're, we're really capped and, and limited on what we can, we can't get three hundred dollars a night for a hotel in Norwalk. And, and so we have to be mindful of the materials we use in construction, because if we were to adhere to your current building code standards. It would add about a million and a half plus dollars to our overall build and we don't have a way to recoup that, because our, our average daily rate. You know, is capped in that mid-scale market.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just follow up with that. I think Ryan makes a great point, you know, we, we don't, with the, with the surrounding neighborhoods. Maybe, maybe accepting, you know, a very similar design standard, architectural standards for. You know, for their, how the amount of EFS you can use on their facades, you know, those traffic counts are, are substantially higher than what we're going to be dealing with here. Um, you know, then, and that's just less size on, on the building and uh we're, we're trying to be conscious of a responsible budget here for sure.
Yeah, thanks Mitch. And then I'll add to, um, you know, uh Ted, my partner and I are, are, I would uh say extremely. Um, good operators, uh, we take great pride in the private properties we own across the state of Iowa. And develop and, and we're gonna, regardless of the material, whether it's EFS, which I think is a, a quality material and it's, it's um used across the country for. Fairfield ends and, and lots of other hotels, uh, but we're, we're not going to let the property become dilapidated regardless of material. Uh, if stone falls off, uh, which we have happen all the time at our downtown hotel, because sometimes that's the problem with stone in Iowa in the winters, et cetera. Um, you know, the stones put back on immediately, we're not letting things uh ride, uh, when someone pulls up to our hotel. The first thing they see is the building and we're make sure that building appearance, whether it's the landscaping, the stone, the EFS, whatever it is, the windows. Are clean, look nice, uh, it's, it's the first thing that a guest sees and when they're coming into the hotel and that goes for the interior of the property as well. So regardless of material, um, you know, we are going to make sure the building uh stays in excellent condition um in the community there.
All right, and I, I'd like to follow up with that too. I think Ryan also makes another great point about the maintenance of EFS, you know, um. With, with most prototype hotels, especially the, the prototype hotel in, in Marriott that we're dealing with here, uh, most parking. Uh, parking lots and sidewalks are set back from the facade, so most uh, but most damage that would happen to, to EFS. Would not be human um or impact driven, uh, which I think helps the, the product out tremendously. Um, so I think that's definitely something to consider here for, for that matter too. And another thing is Ryan had mentioned, you know, in Iowa, there's extreme temperature swings, extreme season swings. Um, that is what uh EFS was really built for, is being able to be flexible to the three, the freeze thaw process. And uh, and, and wicking moisture out so you don't get cracking that you would with like a stucco product.
All right, thank you for your input. So getting back to the purpose of, of the item. Do you want? Counsel, do you want planning and zoning to consider changes to this, to the zoning ordinance? To allow something different for the hotel, for hotels?
I do, yes.
I, I think, and it's like, as we commented earlier, in, in my mind, I want to see kind of a uniformity across what we're trying to do up there. And so in my mind, it would make sense that whatever we're requiring for apartments. We'd require something similar for the hotel. So, yeah, I would very much welcome them taking a look at that.
Okay, so then can I get a motion to approve the resolution to set May fourth, twenty twenty-three for a public hearing here? To talk about whatever planning and zoning decides.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, so motion by cool, second by living stint, any further discussion? Hearing none. Kalen, what'd you call the role?
Councilmember Reba?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor, can I just a second?
Yes.
Um, I kind of whispered to the mayor that we should probably kind of end this a little bit and I just kind of want to explain that, because I know we probably have some people back there that wanted to talk. And uh, I don't know if that's the case, but really this type of change requires a public hearing. Okay, so really the process that should be followed is that P and Z has their hearing and gets all this information you've take. You've heard today and.
You've heard today and more, and gives plenty of opportunity for everybody on both sides of the issue to give input. Then they make recommendation to you and you have a public hearing. So all this information that you were taking in today and statements really should be repeated in the public hearing, because that's. That is, that is the process that we go through when making these decisions. Uh, I kind of leaned over to the mayor, said we should probably shut this down, is what we're asking of, do we want to set a public hearing and have to even be look at it?
And, and then the, I think also the direction of. The item as proposed, changing it all, or do you want us to consider something else? And so we've got some direction for that, something else, we will work, uh, internally and with the applicant and other. Uh, hotel interests around to come up, we think is a reasonable thing. And present that to P and Z with our public hearing on Monday and then be back before you with.
Okay, so that motion carries. Just to get it on. All right, item nine D is first reading of an ordinance amending chapter one seventy-seven rates and fees regarding aquatic center fees. So. Robin, I'll just turn it over to you.
Okay. Um, so similar to the research that we did. For Magnet Sports Complex, figuring out the subsidy prior to. Requesting the fee increase, we have done the same thing for the aquatic center. Um, before. We have requested the current fee, the proposed fees that you see before you. Do you have the? Summary?
Oh, yep, I can open that.
I say, I shared it with you later in the day today. So just to summarize, Luke's gonna pull up a separate chart. Currently, the pool is subsidized seventy-one percent. By taxpayers. And twenty-nine percent is covered by patrons that attend the pool each year. Um, the chart shows different levels of subsidy. And what those would possibly look like. Um, I have a column in there, what the current rates are. What the proposed rates are, and then the percent of increase. For the proposed rates, yeah. And then just to kind of, there's a couple of things I wanted to call out. So when I'm on some rates. It says there's a percent increase, but if you look at current proposed rates, they're the same. Um, what has happened is we have restructured the program. And with that restructure, the, it, it allows more participants. And so in the end, we'll actually see more, an increase in revenue. The other piece I wanted to call out was rentals. We have also restructured the rentals. And propose a significant increase in rate. Staff and parking right commissions, be that as an extra benefit. To. Participants, and so they wanted that to be more in line with rental rates for surrounding communities. Which is what is reflected there. Current rental rates. We have an hourly charge for. Um, different. Um, participation, so it goes one through twenty-five, twenty-six through fifty, fifty-one through seventy-five. And each of those has a different rate based on how many people are at the rental. And so the restructured is just. Um, it's four hundred dollars for two hours. And you can have a maximum of a hundred people, makes it easier for us to. Charge and allows us to more easily staff the proper lifeguards. Based on, so we'll just staff for a hundred each time. And in the past, they might tell us they're bringing fifty, we staff for fifty, and then they end up bringing seventy-five. And then we. Might have to try to call in someone or. Go without the correct number of lifeguards. Any questions? On the proposed rates? Um, yes, the last time these were raised was two thousand and twelve. Yes.
I have, uh, yeah, our, uh, pool is at overcapacity for the most part. Um, it's subsidized greatly by the city taxpayers. I would spec, I would expect a larger difference between resident and non-resident. I would expect a huge increase in non-resident rates when we're over capacity. It's so crowded, you can walk across it and not get wet. Um, it's just, uh, it's difficult. When I see that there's not much difference between resident and non-resident.
Yeah, so our resident, um, rate is set, and historically. The non-resident rate is fifteen percent higher than that resident rate. Um, if city council wishes, we can increase that non-resident percentage. Um, you would just have to let me know. I'm not opposed to that.
I guess I'm thinking of. I don't know, the non-resident rate being. Grandma who comes to visit and takes the kids to the pool, or aunt who comes to visit, takes the kids to the pool, or, you know, my friend I. Play soccer with, who comes and spends the day with me. I don't feel like she have a. Huge influx of people clamoring to come to our pool from out of town.
So the hard thing is. Coming is so close, they are non-resident, and so it's not that we get. The Western moon or, and daily admission, we don't charge a resident, non-resident rate. It's the passes, exercise classes, swim lessons, um.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, and so we are, we got Martinsville, um. Coming that are close that actually do, that's where you see that.
And then also what you pointed out is our school district is larger than the city, so we have a lot of city. Students that use our pool. But their parents don't pay anything towards the computer. And, uh, so that's a, an additional thing, you got school students, but. I just, as long as the pool is so overcapacity. And it's so highly subsidized, I just don't see a reason not to have on resident.
So that non-resident rate is across the board for all programs that we offer, not just the pool. That fifteen percent also goes into effect for, um, all the programs that we do. At Mackinich or Crafts Club that we do after school, um, so it could. When we raise that non-resident rate.
I would think they could be treated differently. Uh, the cost of soccer fields and baseball fields and that are significantly different. I think the pool is what it is. Overcapacity, and I think would be easy to. Easy to separate those and see the difference, uh, pretty clearly.
So instead of fifteen percent, are you thinking of?
Forty-five, sixty-five.
How, how did we arrive at fifteen percent?
History?
History, it, it was passed down to me when I became a director. It's not an ordinance, it's just.
I, my memory is that at some point in time, long ago. Uh, somebody said, well, there should be a difference, and I think previous park right directors arbitrarily, it's around fifteen percent. I don't think there was a study on it, I don't think they looked at, okay, who's being subsidized or anything like that, I think it was just.
I don't really know what our capacity for baseball soccer, all that is, I mainly.
Can we separate the pool from the rest of the ref?
Yep, sure, do whatever you want.
What do you guys feel?
I guess I'm, I'm in agreement with you on the pool. You know, I don't know about the other programs that she runs.
I don't.
But, uh, I agree with you, you know, that's pretty well, I know we subsidize, well, I understand that, all communities do. But that's a.
I just punched in a quick number there to give you an idea what that would be on.
Right. That's good. I mean, I think our, our monthly. Bills are really, really low. If, if a family partakes in it fifteen, twenty times, the cost per visit is way below our. Our admission fees and. I think there would be a lot of.
Right, so we can only talk about. Aquatic Center tonight.
That's what we're talking about right now.
She's offering.
Well, I just asked, we can separate. Yes, that's all I ask.
Gotcha.
So I would support. Brian's proposal that we increase. I think eighty percent's a little high, but.
He say something, I heard forty-five.
I can't take yes for an answer.
You ready to call in one of them?
I, I, I don't know, I, I don't necessarily care, I, I don't have. Strong opinion about a number, I agree that we should raise, there should be a greater difference. But.
That's too much.
Forty something, good numbers.
Forty?
What is that actually, uh?
And I only changed it on the one that's highlighted, just to give you an idea, if the swim lessons for resident was thirty, it would change the proposed to forty-two, if it was a forty percent.
That seems very reasonable to me.
I am, I am, as an aside, entertained by the, um, household season pass, non-resident for three months. Hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. This doesn't say, I don't want to debate that, I just think.
So is everybody okay with the sixty-five percent for property taxpayers?
No.
Do we have a choice?
What do you think it should be, Dave?
Zero, that's my personal opinion, but no, um, I, I don't know, I'm. I, I, I think that having the non-residents be higher, because we're subsidizing those even. Um, when, when a swim lesson costs seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents and, and the non-residents still only, not even paying half that. And even at the proposed rate, they're not quite, they're, they're paying just over, just over half, it's not like they're paying that much more. I, I guess to me, that tells me that we're not charging enough to non-residents, because they're not. They're not paying anything to it beyond whatever they pay in for that fee, and to me, that's. I don't know. That, that's kind of my thought process, is that I, I, I know the, the percent over ours is gonna be, you know, is it, is sixty dollars make more sense? It's a hundred percent more than ours? Yeah, to me it does. They're still not paying the whole seventy-eight, forty-five. And that's not right either.
I'm kind of viewing this as incremental, I eventually would like that sixty-five to work its way toward zero, sixty-five percent. But I think we have to take it in small chunks, so I'm taking what I can get this year.
Be interesting to see what, if any, effect it has on the, uh, on the non-resident sales.
Right.
So I, yeah.
And so swim lessons, would you consider? My concerns with swim lessons, we have a lake in town. If we raise it too much and we don't get the school district kids to do swim lessons. I'm concerned that.
School district kids should not be using the lake.
I agree.
I hear what you're saying, but.
An issue, I think, beyond our control.
Well, I don't know, it's beyond our control to try and reach every. Child in our town to teach them to swim.
The ones in our town are the thirty-two. It's, it's out of town.
That's true.
And in, hey, being a parent who had to pay for swim lessons about ten years ago, it was a hundred dollars a month for swim lessons. Um, to not do, I mean, we, we did park and rec for a couple of years, but then we went somewhere else. It was a hundred dollars, and you guys put on a good program there, I mean, uh, we're discounting it so much, I don't feel like we're giving ourselves the credit we deserve. Uh, you guys put on a good product, so I don't know why we're not charging a fair amount for it.
So that is the same rate as surrounding communities for what we offer.
But what is the same rate?
This one, Austin rate, all of the rates here are very similar, um.
The ones that you, that's what I'm trying to understand, the ones that you proposed? The thirty-four.
The seventy-eight, forty-five would be what we would charge if we wanted the zero percent subsidy.
But, but what number is the number that is. Couple of the rest of communities, thirty, thirty?
Yeah.
I hear what you're saying, Robin, and I want to support the people in our community, but I agree with Brian that. The pool is a finite resource and it costs the city a lot of money. And so I would agree with Brian that people who don't pay the taxes to support the pool should have to pay more to use it. In all, in all areas of using the pool, so I would agree with forty percent.
Next year.
So can I also, mayor?
Yes.
Um, with. Season coming up, um, moving forward, I know we, this is three readings. Um, would I be able to ask that after the second reading, we look at way being the third if. Council chooses and if we don't have any comments?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a note to remind Lindsay to put it on the agenda that way. Okay.
Great, so can we move something?
So, uh, so the motion would be to accept. The resident, uh, change to sixty-five percent. And to change. Non-residents up forty percent of the resident rate. Okay, so motion by Livingston, seconded by Reba, any further discussion or public comment? Hearing none, Kalen, would you call a role?
Member Cool?
Yes.
Livingston, yes, Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Uh, item nine E. Discussion and feedback regarding a request to amend the Norwalk future land use map for property at Southwest Corner and Orchard Hills Drive and North Avenue. From new urbanism to commercial to allow for a rezoning of the property to C three. So this property is the open lot where the water tower is. Uh, and new no, new owner would like to put in many stor, many storage facilities, so. They would need the rezoning change made. Uh, Luke, I'll let you take it from here.
Yep, uh, thank you, uh.
I won't go into a lot of the history for that. It's in the staff report if you, um, really care a lot about it. Um, but essentially, uh, these, uh, developers, uh, Brian Waslow and Peter Cork Green, um, were looking to do many storage in town. Um, we only allow many storage in C three and M one districts, so those locations are pretty limited. Um. Originally, uh, looked at another area that, uh, they requested rezoning on that was denied by, uh, P and Z because it was in a new urbanism district. Um, so they've identified another parcel here by the water tower, which has the same problem. So we have, uh, uh. Suggested that they request a land use amendment change first, rather than a going straight to a rezoning, um. Because of that P and Z recommendation, uh, at the last one they did. So that's essentially what this is. Um. The P and Z's kind of, through their opinion anyway, determined that the new urbanism category is not something that we would, uh, tend to think C three uses would be allowed in. Um, so we would want to change this from new urbanism to straight commercial if we wanted to consider many storage in that space. And then there would have to be a future hearing to even rezone it from the current C one to C three. Uh, I'd be relieved Brian is here, uh, as applicant, um, if, uh, you have any questions for him. But again, similar to the architectural standards item earlier, uh, this would be a discussion and direction. To spur staff to proceed with the process, not necessarily a, uh, determination of what you want to do, rather, should we consider something? Right, Jim?
That's great.
Yeah.
It's okay. Do you want to consider? Do you guys want to consider?
No.
No.
No, I don't.
Okay. So I think there's your answer.
Okay.
So that. Just be a hundred percent clear.
And can you come up?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I, right. Drive Norwalk. Um. We've been down this road a little bit with the Brody's landing pieces. And I thought it was going to be a simple rezone from C four to C three. Um, and that happened to fall into new urbanism. C three, believe, at that, at that piece. So that was, I was introduced to not, not only rezoning. Rezoning it from like a C three neurosism to C three non-neural urbanism. Um, and so at that point in time, uh, we started looking for different pieces. And so the piece by the water tower with a maintenance road by it, uh, and a water tower piece, it's, uh, kind of by itself. And it's not necessarily great for, uh, walking traffic. I was just, we were asking because of P and Z issued their statement based on the technicalities of they cannot. Not say they don't recommend it because new urbanism C three doesn't allow for self-storage. They didn't, they didn't like the idea. It's just that by the letter of the law. New urbanism doesn't allow for self-storage, whether it's C one, two, three, or four. Right? And so. That was why I was here to, you guys take each individual piece by itself and. Look at. Letting P and Z make a decision there instead of their, their decision was, well, we, there is no decision to make because it's legally. Not allowed. Like a decision, honestly, it's already written down.
Okay. I still. Still no. Yeah, it's, sorry.
Oh, sure. Just make sure.
Okay, item nine F, discussion and feedback regarding a request to purchase land adjacent to twelve hundred East Eighteenth Street and the Norwalk Aquatic Center. So this property is currently open ground. It's grass, uh, right by the pool. A homeowner would like to purchase part of it so that they can expand their home. Uh, Robin, what was Park and Rec's recommendation on this?
Um, their recommendation was not to sell the land. So they're, um. They. Did not have a lot of this information. The information came after our meeting. Uh, as to the amount of land he was requesting and the cost. Um, but. When asked if they wanted to table it, they said the information would not change their minds, so they went ahead and voted on. The recommendation not to sell. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I mean. I, actually, the main thing, I think Robin just covered it, uh, this part here at the bottom. On April tenth, following the Park and Rec, Rec Commission meeting, were a couple of additional items that came from, uh. The property owner requesting to purchase the property. Explain that there was actually a price that they offered along with a more specific description of an area eleven feet wide and seventy-seven feet long. Right. I mean. But, what, what do you think?
I mean, at, at some point, in parts, a lot of our time about windfall park and, and the products center, how you might. Expand it and if you have to move the parking lot or do something to the main building, I just. Think any, you, anything you do, you might need that strip of land. You said might have to move the utilities, might. Might end up with something right up. You know, wanting to go next to where that first can have a garage. I just think. Until you really understand what's going to happen at Woodford long time, and I would say, don't give up any.
So. I'm trying to understand, right, the blue stripe is the land he wants to buy.
The blue land are where the current utilities are located. And it is a utility easement.
And where. Where his property line ends here where the black line is.
Correct.
And so he wants to buy over to the other side of the easement?
Well, eleven feet, this drawing came out a little bit earlier. I'm going to say that eleven feet, let me see if I can just. Mark a line where that would roughly be. Believe eleven feet would probably end up right about there.
That's.
Park and Rec is kind of in charge of it. They said they didn't want to sell. End of story for me.
I think public land is easy to get right over five of the plot.
And I know we wouldn't pay a thousand dollars if we wanted to expand, right?
You're exactly right. And I agree with Stephanie that, you know, we don't know what's coming down the pike here for sure, right? Could be something or maybe not. Right, but there's no reason to hire on the end. Sympathy for the property owner, but they knew the property limitations when they acquired the property. Yeah. So I guess I'm a no.
Almost as far as I'm in the knowledge. Uh, we're talking about eleven feet of space that is not used, that will not be used, that there's already an easement that covers the utility need.
David, you got an opinion?
Um, I'd be okay with the eleven feet, but the price has got to go up because again, I know what we would be asked to pay for that eleven feet if we needed it.
But. Overall, I'm hearing. Not right, no. Mayor, I might, Jim, you may want to weigh on this. Um, this particular item as well as the previous one. Even if there's a decision by council to say no, there's some advantages of. Having an affirmative motion to move forward with an item with nay votes to officially do a roll call to know the decision.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what we should do is probably motion, if there's a second, and then just. Put it to bed, yes.
And we can get into a bunch of Robert's rules discussion about the benefits of always making an affirmative motion, even though your intention is to vote no, but I'll just lean on Jim to give that.
I prefer to see positive votes, people that it would fail if that's where it's going to go. Uh, I don't like the negative motions.
Is it no vote really voting yes?
Yeah.
So I.
Sorry, yes. Sure.
So I would move that. City proceed with the sale of land. Don't discuss by eleven feet, but seven, eight feet long.
I would say, I'd say that at a maximum price negotiated by.
I, I didn't understand anything you said. Say it again.
Maximum price negotiated by staff.
What?
She's making a motion to approve proceeding with the sale. Is what she did. It's positive motion.
Or it could die without a second.
You're making a motion to go forward with the sale.
Because Jim asked for a positive motion.
Yes.
All right. Uh, would you recommend, well, let's just do voice vote. So, uh, got a motion by Riva, seconded by Livingston to sell. Property. Uh, any further discussion? Or public comment at this point? Hearing none. Caitlin, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Lester?
No.
Baker?
No.
Reba?
No.
Cool.
No.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, uh, that motion fails. Item number ten, future agenda items. So real, real quick. Would it be a good idea to do the same thing for nine E? Now this says discussion and feedback, so maybe it doesn't require. Formal action.
It'll say discussion.
I, I think with, with E though, it's, it's. What the proper action would have been, would have been for it. Or it is.
Okay.
And the fact that. See, that, that, that's laid out kind of in the code, so I think we can see that it was a, or council was not referred.
Thank you. Thank you. Item ten, future agenda items, uh. For the purpose of this is for council to give direction to staff by way of motion. Have items placed on future agendas. Uh, it's not for discussion of the merits of the subject matter. Would anybody like to make a motion to? Look at the non-resident rates for other park and rec programs? So I heard that.
No.
Okay. Good. Any other, any other motions anybody would like to make? But. Item on the agenda for future. Okay, hearing none.
Would this, would this cover work sessions? Or just council meeting?
Social media?
Okay, we need that on this.
The social.
Well, I think council could vote to have a work session on one. I think it's, it's council's opportunity to put something on the agenda formally.
Sure.
Uh, doesn't mean, also, there's other ways, I mean. Like you said last time, the mayor can put it on, uh, without a vote or even being bothered at this time, but also. If there's something that. Councilman, I'm going to make things on the agenda, there's the opportunity to do that.
What would you like a work session on?
Well, I tell you, I had breakfast the other day. I got crowd, but people on ATVs and UTVs. And it, it's something that, you know, just keeps coming back. And so. Uh, you know, a lot of people came in, visited with us on it, that, you know, probably deserved to be heard. But. I guess what I'd like to see are the council to consider is having a separate work session on that. And here are the pros and the cons, both sides, you know, this, this is.
Wanted that on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to have that work session. All right. At some point.
Start, thank.
Mayor?
Yeah. In economic development, we were talking about social, uh, treatment of social media.
Yeah.
We should probably discuss some of that sometime.
I think once Holly gets, Holly and Ty get policy set, we'll bring it.
Then we'll have a discussion. And.
Okay. Anything else? All right, moving on, council inquiries and staff updates. Uh, I just have a few items. First, uh, I was asked to participate in superintendent interviews next week. Actually, I asked Jackie first. She declined, so I'm going to jump in there and help out with those interviews. I'm looking forward to that. That's next Wednesday. Uh, it looks like they should have a decision probably by the end of next week. They need to move pretty rapidly because they're going to bring somebody on board as of July one of this summer. So certainly we missed DT, uh, moving, but, uh, looking forward to being part of that process. Next item, uh, Holly, you're probably going to talk about this, but you won't give yourself a compliment, so I will. Um, Holly did an outstanding job. Um, I think Ryan would even back me up. He was there at the presentation. Uh, the commercial real estate forum is put on by the business record. And this year they had a, a group of panelists, so about six people. Uh, there was some private industry, somebody from Des Moines, uh, city was there on the panel. And Holly was there. And I thought she did an outstanding job of representing the city of Norwalk. Uh, she had a lot of positive feedback. Even since then, I've had a couple of emails from people that attended that wanted to pass along kudos. So, great job. Uh, today, the chamber, they had a luncheon and Holly presented at that.
So did you?
And I. I got pulled into it with a question about the pool.
There you go.
Counsel, I will let you know again that I said the same thing I did the last time I heard that. And I said, council has established a vision and goals. And that's the direction that staff moves. A pool is not on that list. If at some point in time enough citizens come forward, reach out to elected officials and ask for that, then you will put that on your goal list. Or your strategic vision in the future, and then we as staff will accomplish that. And then Holly pointed that means she said, don't forget. And I said, oh, that's right. Uh, there were two bills that were passed recently, one on the House side, one on the Senate side. Of course, those bills then have to go to the other chamber for approval. Both of those bills would significantly restrict the amount of new revenue a city and Iowa would have year over year. And what I said to this audience is that even if the voters said, yes, we, we say yes to a new pool, we're okay with raising our taxes to pay for it. My concern is that the legislation being proposed would restrict our ability to maintain or even staff that facility. So I said that to this group, it all sounds great to put in a new pool until you start looking at the dollars and cents and the legislation coming forward. So. See, Holly builds them up and I.
Good job.
Pressing.
I agree with you.
So the Keith and that is a nice segue into legislation about those two bills. Uh, just to let you know, I also got together with a group of metro managers. Uh, there's a lot of collective agreement that we need to see the writing that's on the wall with the state legislature and instead of spending so much time fighting or arguing. We need to take the cards that are being dealt to us and do our best to help guide. And, uh, modify or amend that legislation as we see fit. I sent an, an email to Leah Cities today, asking them to forward on to several key legislators a willingness to get together with them and talk about some possible amendments. Uh, Jean and I went down yesterday to Greater Des Moines Partnership, put a lunch on the hill. We went, uh, so we were at the luncheon to talk with legislators. They got called into caucus. We went in. Uh, put our names in to talk to Julian and, uh, he came out and spoke with us. We had a good discussion. Jean has a little bit of the history. She knows, uh, Brad's on. Uh, he noticed and he came over and spoke to us for a little bit specifically about this legislation. He gave us a few good tips. And we ended up actually going into, uh, senate chambers and we listened to the debate on that bill. And what was the most startling is out of the four or five people that spoke, there was really only one person that seemed to have a really good handle. On local finances, which is a little scary. Hmm. So I don't necessarily mean that as a criticism, but it's hard to expect somebody at that level to understand the level of detail that Jean or I, council, staff know. So again, we understand that their goals are to lower taxes. That's great. I'm going to try to accommodate that. We just need to do it the most intelligently possible. So we'll keep working on it. I may be begging on some of our elected officials to join me in the future to go down there and have some of those discussions. That's all.
Thank you.
Jenny.
Um. Icon Water Trails is getting ready to do ground baking at the Scott Avenue Dam. That is Thursday, we, today at eleven o'clock. Um, it's the, really the first step in restructuring and redesigning. Um, that river, uh, that runs through Des Moines, that has a bunch of dams and obstacles that present, prevents people from enjoying it from. Point A to point B continuously. Um, so Scott Avenue is going to be a major reconstruction. Um. They're going to put in some water features, some, um, rapids areas, um. Um, they're going to put in some water features, some, um, rapids areas, um, tie it into the bike trail. It's really quite a great, great project. Um, first one of three that's gonna take off. And so the groundbreaking is Thursday.
Thank you, Brian. All right, Caitlin? No, Rob?
Um, just so let everyone know that the field house ground is stabilized, so they've, um, finished that. Um, framing will start mid-June and the temporary road access on the northwest side. From Hughes Drive is in and will allow vehicles to access the site. Um, we're preparing the pool for opening, so we're cleaning and doing all that stuff already. Shelter rentals will start this weekend and MacIntyre's in full swing. We've got practices and games and it's our fourth weekend for tournaments. So. Yeah, I know. So that's it.
Thanks, Jean.
Um. On behalf of the Library Foundation and our Warrior of the Year Award winner, it, uh, the Cherish the Library event is her signature event. And it's taking place at the library tomorrow at six thirty. Just a reminder, um, you can get tickets at the door. We'd love to have you there. And the foundation is also having a book sale, uh, May eighteenth through the twentieth. So we're taking donations through the tenth. I know some of you have generously donated to that before to make it an excellent book sale. So thank you and please come and buy more books for the summer times. That's it.
Thanks.
Very well deserved for Judy. Talk about a community cheerleader and yeah, I just believe it. And she's, I love it because she's very. Defensive of us as a city and staff. And when people are out there attacking us unprovoked, she is, she's like a family member out there. Thank you. So, um, because we can get beat up quite a bit as public servants and that's okay. It's part of the job, but you know, sometimes there are some limits that get pushed. And it's nice to know there's community members that care and we'll fight back. So we appreciate that. Um, and speaking of the chamber presentation today, that was kind of a fun environment because I don't know fifty plus people are compromising. We're there. Um, we just, those are our people. That's our crew because they, they understand, they know what's going on out there in the, in the public and when things aren't true and what's happening and. Um, just supportive business environment. And it was just kind of a fun exchange. It didn't feel so much of the presentation. It's just a big discussion about everything that's going on. So that was kind of a cool. Um, environment, the Business Record, um, Commercial Real Estate Forum that you mentioned was a little intimidating with four hundred people there and it's. Developers and brokers and Realtors and attorneys. It was all these, you know, brilliant people and you know, you don't want to be the one on the panel to bring down the curve. So I just. It was, it was just good to see that, you know, Norwalk is now being grouped in with these, with the big players in the metro and, you know, the city of Des Moines on the panel and City of Norwalk's on the panel. I mean, that didn't happen a few years ago, so they're starting to kind of bring us into that fold and it's, it's a good feeling. So kudos to the council for everything that you guys, um, are doing, the decisions you're making, because that's making a difference in the metro. Um, tomorrow at three oh five, be watching because we will have a giant press release coming out. We're super excited. Hundred and forty-six million dollars worth of announcements. We're very happy to see this finally, um, coming out. And you guys also saw the Starbucks press release that came out this morning and stirred up some great and stirred up some not so great. But we're pretty happy. You know what? Another coffee shop. I don't know how you could not be happy about that. So. Right? No lines for a little while till the tournament start up. Um, Fairway will want to be giving a groundbreaking pretty soon. They did ask, um, to kind of start looking at some dates. So I don't know if you guys have any specific weeks or dates in May that you're just an absolute no, that you can't be there. Please send those to, we'd like to get them on calendar. Um, because it's going to be a bad house in the Norwalk Central area in terms of construction. Um, uh, it's even worse than it is right now because everything's going to be happening at the same time here over the next several months. So if we can get them done probably sooner than later would be better for everything, parking included. Um, so I think that those are the main things right now, other than we just have a lot of great things coming up in Norwalk Central with, uh, users and, and restaurants and businesses that are. Um, signing contracts and our hotels are moving along really well. Um, and Jackie and I went and met with, uh, the, um, Brewer Ownership Group of Court Avenue. And they want to brew a special beer just for Norwalk and Norwalk Central and our celebrities and just a cool launch in the summer with, with that. And then we also have our, um, celebrities involved in some projects in Norwalk Central that we'll get to announce and move forward with. So just lots of great things happening right now.
Thank you, Jean.
Well, my stuff's pretty exciting. I'll be bringing forward, uh, utility rate increases. It's just like four percent to water and, uh, two percent to sewer. And a lot of that is for the treatment. Um, through Des Moines Water Works and Water Reclamation Authority. That's a lot of it. Um, so that'll be coming late May. And then I, we're working on a GASB rule that came down, uh, for subscription, subscription, can't say it, based, uh, information technology agreements. Something that we're going to have to put in our next audit and, um, we're cash based, so it's not as onerous for us as accrual based. But, um, auditors are working on trying to, um, give us the best advice because they're still trying to grasp, um, what it means. So. Uh, and then the budget amendment will be coming next month as well. Oh, yeah.
Good deal, cheap.
Um, the sire, the storm sanitary test happened on April eighth. That was successful. All the sirens are up and working properly. Good news now that we're in storm season. Um, the association, the Firefighters Association had their pancake breakfast on the eighth as well. We served over eleven hundred people. That was a lot. That's the highest we've had in the past few years. I think the nice weather helped us. So thank you to the community for supporting the Firefighters Association. Uh, we have started our company level commercial inspection program, so we may see firefighters out and about. Going into our businesses to make sure that they're adhering to the fire code and keeping our community safe. Um, as you may or may not have seen in the consent agenda, I'm really excited. Um, the fire department was awarded the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Um, that was in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, uh, through FEMA. So, um, I started that project, my very first book over this position. There were some delays through FEMA. That's why it was kind of a few. A few years here in the makings. Uh, Jean helped a lot. We had some issues on the administrative side of things, but that was a, that was a big grant for us and it took a lot of effort, um, from our staff. Um, in addition to that, we did get also a Warren County Thon Thropic Grant for four thousand dollars. We got that all in the same week. We were buying some low angle rescue equipment with that. And Lieutenant Mees is one of our lieutenants. It's on a division at our department. Um, sadly, he has resigned from our department, but it's because he got the fire chief's position for the city Windsor Heights. So we're excited to, to have him move on with his new endeavors, but we will be opening the process pretty soon to fill our lieutenant's position. So, thank you.
Nothing tonight?
Eric?
Nothing to worry.
Um, couple of things, uh, nuisance wise, uh, we'd had some nuisance complaints about cats at the four oh seven center property. Um, so we've worked with, uh, Whiskers, a group out of Warren County to do some tracking of that. They're doing some work with them. And, uh, so, uh, trying to get that under control a little bit at that property. Um, with the rain yesterday, we had some storm water issues at some construction sites. As you know, it's, uh, spring and things get muddy and everything. So we've, uh, worked with some developers to get things reestablished and everything. But if you hear something or have some concerns, you see, let us know and we'll get people on top of it. Um, we've gotten an interesting new urbanism proposal in town. I don't have a whole lot of details yet, but, uh, new organism. So the, uh, kind of work group that we formed a little bit, talking about mix of densities and uses and stuff. So, um. It's interesting to have a group come to us saying we want to do that. So that's kind of exciting. Um, permit totals for, uh, April were up to thirty, um, which is tracking ahead of what, uh, our average is for Aprils. So that's, uh, good. And that puts us kind of back on track with our five-year running average of permits, um, from the beginning of the year through April. So we're up at sixty-four right now. So that's good news, maybe a sign of, uh, some of that housing market, uh, getting back to normal as far as, uh, new housing starts go. And lastly, uh, tomorrow, I'm participating in a missing middle housing forum that Polk County Housing Trust Fund's putting on. They had an event today and then they've kind of scheduled a event for metro planners and stuff tomorrow with a zoning reform consultant to talk about. Zoning reforms that cities can do to encourage more missing middle and workforce housing, so.
Was that the, um, there was one today. Is that one AJ, one of our ENZ members went to and poured this information?
Yep. So and then, uh, Polk County Trouser and Trust Fund has the keynote from today at the bigger event as a small group discussion scheduled for tomorrow. So we'll be involved with that.
Um, I noticed that the number of traffic cones on our streets is beginning to diminish. That's always a good thing. I was curious though, if the Public Works Director had any insight as to the, uh, North Avenue intersection. And I noticed that a lot of the concrete there looks like it's been placed and probably in the process of curing.
Yeah, they'll break, they'll break cylinders. I think tomorrow we'll see if they can open up lane, get it back open to two lanes. Get the new trail sidewalk of median. The, the list is getting smaller for sure. At the live meeting, they're estimating six weeks of work remaining. I haven't seen an update since.
No, I, I'd be good if it's traffic worship. Okay, thank you.
All right, David.
I just want to thank, uh, I had several staff members come to Lions Club this year and talk about their departments and projects going on. And I think I told them all it's going to be a fifteen to twenty minute thing and think all of them spent almost an hour to an hour and a half there. So. Uh, thanks to Robin and Holly and, uh, Joe from Public Works and Chief Staples and Chief Porter and Luke Paris. Um, you guys all did a great job. So thank you guys and, and remember as a community, um, those guys are all, that our staff's open to sharing this information publicly. So. Um, if you have questions, be sure to call and talk to them.
All right, thank you, Stephanie.
Um, just a heads up to. Um, you're gonna get a call from Allison about, you know, about a term. Treating and fueling infrastructure discretionary bet program.
I've seen the emails come through, so I.
She's just gonna want to know if. I never see any money from it, but.
Okay, thank you.
Hitting on, hitting on nuisance a little bit more is, uh, there are some progressions on the four oh seven Center Street House. I think there's an insight on it and it's, there's been some pretty good movement on it. And, you know, we, we've got both litigation going on and I, this is a private interest going to do. So I think we're hopefully gonna take care of that pretty quick. Luke Nelson and Luke Paris have also been, uh, that Lu- Luke Paris has been kind of enabling and getting his staff going as far as nuisance enforcement and. I know Luke Nelson's tour of the place is, I'm doing that tomorrow with Tony Stravas. We're gonna get a individual game plan. Uh, there's a number of houses. Few houses that really need attention here in town. We're gonna get individual game plans for each one of them and they very well could include litigation on each one of them, but we're gonna get a game plan and get moving on that. I think everyone's kind of anxious to do that, so we're progressing for that.
Thank you. Uh, the only thing I have is, is the Warrior of the Year award is, is well deserved, so. So, and that's all I had. I would, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry. Motion by Livingston, seconded by Baker, always in favor, say aye. All right. Same, we are adjourned. Yes, eight oh three P M. He said that I was this close.